...out and say to each other, and I'm glad that all five of us did participate in that. With that, calling me into order, please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please proceed. Remember to silence your cell phones, please. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor, hearing no discussion, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Items two through five constitute consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the October 31st meeting, item three is approval of the claims, item four from secondary roads is approval of permit to work in the right of way for SBT Foods/RP constructor and to direct the chair to sign the permit. Item five from human resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, B authorization to initiate the hiring process, and C approval for the chairman to sign the Delta Dental 2024 renewal. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Radek, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item six, the reason you're all here tonight is Woodbury County receives the 2023 National Lifetime Pavement Recognition Award. For information from our county engineer Mark Nara.
We were notified a couple of weeks ago that the American Concrete Paving Association has selected Old Highway 20, also known as Frendage Road, right in front of my office, as eligible for the 2023 National Lifetime Pavement Recognition Award. They cite the remarkable longevity, durability, and resilience of this pavement. It was done in 1922 and remains in service to this day in 2023 and is anticipated to go for a while yet, so. This is a nice honor. There'll be a presentation at the American Concrete Paving Meeting in, it'll be in Marco Island, Florida, December 14th. I'm proposing to send my assistant Ben Kussler to receive the award on our behalf. It conflicts with our county engineers meeting and Ben, since he's retiring, wasn't going to that, but he is available therefore to go to this one, so.
And I know I asked you last week, but just following up, do we get a big check or anything to redo that road?
I really wish there was a check, but in this case it'll just be a very nice plaque. So, I just wanted to make the board aware of that. The pavement has been in county jurisdiction since the 1950s, so we've had it for 70 of those years and it's, like I said, continuing to service at least my facility and everything along the Frendage Road there, so.
Adopted a road that outlasts some of us.
It seems to have outlasted a lot of people in an unanticipated way, so we'll see how much longer it goes.
Congratulations and please thank the crews for all their work.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to have some recognition when things remain in good condition for quite a while. And Ben had done a lot of the historical information on this, so it's kind of nice that he can go down and receive the award on our behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions on that? All right, we'll move on to item seven from the Board of Supervisors submitted by myself and the county attorney James Loomis. This is for action. This is discussion and potential action regarding the hiring of outside legal counsel regarding the law enforcement center project. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session to discuss our options and the timeline specifically, the question of when. And I think, I want to make it clear, the board has received counsel in coordination with our county's attorney's office, and I also would like to ask the board to allow public comment at the beginning of this agenda item, simply so that we can receive all the information we possibly can before making a decision and, and send that signal to the community. So, if you are here to speak and give your perspective or opinion or insight into this, please do approach the microphone with your name and address and our rules do state you have three minutes, and so I would open it up.
Good afternoon, Chris McGowan, President of the Sulan Chamber of Commerce and the Sulan Initiative. Our address is 101 Pierce Street in downtown Sioux City. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Mark Nara and the team with the Board of Supervisors. The Lifetime Achievement Award, or Lifetime Pavement Recognition Award is certainly something positive for our county and our community. Mark's an asset and, and we appreciate his hard work and the hard work of his team. Secondly, I have communicated with each of you independently about the momentous decision that lies in front of you this afternoon. I have urged you to consider the taxpayers, the media coverage, the business community, and the asset that we hope to be to our elected officials when they make decisions of this magnitude that directly affect our community, our county, and the long-term future of taxpayers and citizens. With that in mind, I did ask you to make this decision in consultation, as appropriate, under the legal circumstances that exist today, to reach out to expertise within the business community, within the construction industry, to make absolutely certain that we get this right. I think that my letter earlier outlined specific industry experience and expertise, expertise in major construction litigation, and I appreciate your attention to that correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay, the board will now discuss. First, some introductory comments from me. I don't want this to be a criticism necessarily of the performance of any councils to date. I want to thank the LAC Authority's attorney for making the meeting tonight and other meetings earlier today. What's very important to me is, is that Mark Nelson is getting his requests answered, and I think that he has, he has had a good turnaround experience, and if that was not the case, as I've said before, I'd be the first to harp on it, and I think the board would, would know about it right now, but I want to thank that, you know, the effort and the work put in because it's a complex issue with a lot of moving pieces and several law firms have already played a part in this. The board, I believe, will be served by hiring its own outside legal counsel, and I believe that decision is somewhat made for us at this point because we are at a point where the, the, the question of damages is going to come into clearer focus, especially with the rapid progress, I hope to say continued rapid progress on the construction project itself. The county is going to be facing, we just want to make sure that any sort of settlements or litigation or anything is in the best interests of the county, and for that reason I think that is the direction the board is going to move tonight, and we'll rely on experts in the field, and I believe that we've received counsel on that, and especially with relevant experience. What I want to make sure happens is that when we approach this issue on behalf of our taxpayers, that the Board of Supervisors takes a balanced approach in holding entities responsible and accountable while at the same time realizing that we did relinquish control of this project along with the city. And we did that because that was the only way to build the jail. And the public realized that, which is why there was not the level of controversy there is now back when we did that move, that was a major move. And with that comes, you know, some issues and, and heartburn that the Board of Supervisors did not plan, I think we hope to mitigate just by being cooperative together, but it is, there are perceived conflicts. I'm not making, I'm not saying anything anyone doesn't know already, but in my opinion, this needs to, we need to make sure that those perceived conflicts or potential conflicts do not blossom into disputes because no one is going to win if really any entity on this project throws in the towel, is, is fired, is, is threatened into a corner. We all say the first priority is to finish this project. We've said it so many times and I feel like it's always followed up with a but. So I think that needs to be stated because a lot of the work has been done, there's a lot of work that our attorney will have to come up to speed on, and I'm looking forward to having those discussions with my fellow board members in cooperation and a, and find a path forward that makes sense and that can be communicated in our best interest because a lot of, a lot of what we've done so far is try to broach the topics of, you know, what we don't know that we don't know. And I think we'll get some clarity moving forward. I think it's important for the board to show some cohesion in this motion, and those are my opening comments. I'll open it up. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, I'm appreciative of the tone and tenor of those comments last week. I appreciated the discussion and also having some more advice by our county attorney's office. I think that that was helpful in vetting as well as asking good questions such as the rate that attorneys may be able to offer a public entity. I think that that's been a win as Mr. Loomis has vetted these different entities. So, couldn't agree with you more, the first priority is complete law enforcement center. At the same time, making sure that taxpayers are held as harmless as they can be and that we have those questions and a, you know, kind of a thorny situation answered. So, as a, back up to last week, if we can talk about a couple of the names, if that's, you'd deem that's appropriate?
Yes, yes.
So, last week we talked about a name that I had heard as far as being top in construction law in addition to Mrs. McDougal, whose name was mentioned right up there, that's a compliment to you, was John Templar Jr., and I believe he's widely regarded as the dean of construction law, and I think his over 40 years of experience ranging from Polk and Dubuque, those public entities, to private practice with the Louisiana Superdome, multi-party, multimillion dollar projects. I would continue to voice support there and be open to what others' thoughts are.
I would also like to jump in and say, I don't see this affecting the county's cooperation and participation in joint closed sessions. I would note that all five of us did attend that today, and that's important because the public needs to realize that not only do we have our county attorney's office and eventually a hired construction expert attorney and the LAC Authority's attorney, and one of the LAC Authority members is an attorney, and subject matter attorneys that may visit from time to time. No one is, is, I mean, someone's going to say something if we're going to be quote, "the first people in the jail" because we've discussed things we shouldn't or we've had people there that shouldn't be. So, there are entities out the wazoo looking out for us because it's in everyone's interest that this not self-destruct. And so, what we want to make sure we do is responsibly apply accountability. It does, obviously no good to accuse without basis, and the public can be assured that we'll have a, have a third party representing the county that gives everything a second look, so to speak. Some things may continue to be, may continue to require a level of cooperation simply between the county and the LAC Authority in regards to the lease. There are issues that some board members have that other board members may not have, and those things will come out in the direction that we direct our attorney to go down, but in some areas we've received legal counsel jointly, in some areas we've received legal counsel secondhand, and we'll continue to seek that.
In the original conversations with John Templar, Jeremy Taylor and I were on that call together, in which John spoke very highly of the LAC's attorney Jody McDougal. And I think it's important that those two have worked together many times because they're going to have to work together on this project. I had voiced concerns last week that it would be nice to hire someone local, someone that could be here more in person, and I was very thankful that Jody surprised us all today and was here for these meetings. But the more we heard from attorneys that our attorney's office had vetted, John Templar kept rising to the top. And it's hard to not say that the Woodbury, you know, everyone was saying that he's the best, and it's hard to say that Woodbury County residents don't deserve the best. And so, I think that, I think we've got, you know, two of the best in the state with John and Jody, and so I think that, that shows that we're taking this matter very seriously. And so I would, I would be supportive of working with, with John to have him represent the Board of Supervisors. I think that between the two of them, we'll get this matter handled, so, thank you.
I guess, you know, nothing's really changed opinion-wise for me from last week, you know, I, I think as elected officials, you know, you do seek to also protect yourselves, but on the open face front part of this is that this is a county project in conjunction with the authority. I believe as two separate entities, we should have our own separate counsel, also one that looks out for the county taxpayers, the authority has one that looks out for the authority as an organization. And again, I, you know, I want, I want it to be clear that it's not like we're going out, we're going to name these enemies and go after them, but we do have, you know, certain questions that we just, we, we need to ask and represent us, and it's outside maybe, you know, Josh's specialty or our county attorney, and it's not just outside their specialty or expertise necessarily, but they have a more important job to do when they have murder trials going on, and that's really what county taxpayers and voters elected James to do. They didn't elect him to help the county work on construction projects. So, this is why, you know, we need to look to find somebody that is an expert in the construction field, and I think this is a great fit for Woodbury County to protect the taxpayers, and it gives me a good sense of security knowing that this is the guy we got taking our back to as elected officials.
I would also say this step will not cause necessarily by the simple hiring for costs to go away or go down. In fact, obviously it will increase legal costs. And there are some, some areas where we will collectively fight to have costs reduced, but there are also some areas where we need people to work on, on the project, and if, and if work needs to be redone or done correctly, then the workman is still deserving of his wage, and those costs are still due, and they're still invoiced, and they're still something that is something that wasn't planned for and has to come from somewhere. One concern brought up previously is, is our bonding threshold. I, I don't think that the board is looking to borrow for additional funds in order to complete the project, and obviously any funds that we spend beyond completion date, I hope the public is aware that we are going to collectively pursue recruitment as anyone in our position would do. But, you know, we've been jointly advised by bond counsel that, you know, it is, it is concurrent with even AG opinions that we are able to provide funding as long as it's not additional borrowing, and I don't think that's being contemplated here, but it is something which will be coming up in the near future. It's only common sense that that's going to be coming up. So, I don't want anyone to have a false impression that our attorney can wave a magic wand and cause invoices to disappear unless they are for work that we can contest for any reason. You're good?
Just make one last point, and I'll share this because I think it's appropriate to do so. Tonight, the motion that I will make is to retain the legal services of John Templar Jr. pending an engagement letter based on the wishes of the Board of Supervisors collectively. And so I'd make that motion, and then I'll follow up with a couple of comments if anyone wants a second.
Second.
Mr. Taylor, second by Nelson.
And the reason that I'm doing that is I may have gotten a little ahead of myself, but some of the, the scope of what I would like to see the attorney look at in terms of the scope of what he's going to discover are my own. And so I think it's fair that the Board of Supervisors collectively meet strategically and look at what the, the depth and breadth of the issues are, and so I just want to make that clear that that's something that will come from this board rather than anyone individual supervisor. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Loomis.
James Loomis, Woodbury County Attorney, good evening, gentlemen. Just want to emphasize two things. One, priority is getting this project completed, and setting aside differing opinions, setting aside finger pointing and who's to blame, there'll be a day for that, and that time will come at the appropriate time. The number one goal is to get this project completed, and the decision to hire outside counsel, I advise you to do that at this point in time considering two things. One, working with Jody McDougal moving forward is of utmost importance. A lot of that legwork and initial effort has been done by her, and the person that this board chooses to represent the county needs to work in conjunction with that effort. While there might be differences or different things to consider down the road as to liability and those kinds of things, the emphasis should be working together, and so I would say that to this board. The other thing that I would advise this board is that the decision to hire outside counsel, whoever that person is, should be done in a unified fashion. An attorney wants to represent a client, and the client wants to be able to trust that attorney, and so whatever that decision this board makes, I would urge you and emphasize the fact that being unified in that decision is very important because you need that collective effort because the goal remains the same, get the project done. So, I leave it to the board to make the wise decision as to who that person will be, keeping those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone from the authority like to comment?
Ron Wick, 43, 62 Old Lakeport Road, and I'd just like to say that the authority, as we have been, are here to work with the Board of Supervisors. Our goal is to complete this project as quickly as we possibly can, and then we work together to protect the people of Woodbury County and recover damages for problems that we've had. We've had a lot of problems. We've done as good a job as we possibly can do to keep records of everything. I think that when we do head down that road, we've done everything we possibly can to make it a positive trip, so I just, so we all understand each other, we're here to work together.
Thank you. And obviously it was city-county cooperation that resulted in your appointment to the authority from the beginning. Any other comments, any other public comments? Last call for any board comments. Ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, passes five zero. Item eight from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bittenger, includes A for action, authorize $1,340 from gaming revenues to highlight and support veterans and their families during the month of November.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, Woodbury County has an outstanding level of service and sacrifice that veterans and their families make and have made over the last 172 years, and included in the packet, this is from Camp Dodge, all of the different campaigns I ones have been involved in, how many lives have been lost in that service and sacrifice. And so, this, as we come up to Veterans Day, Mr. Bittenger and I worked on this, he was good enough and has been a faithful attendee of every Veterans Affairs Commission, so our goal is to have a threefold approach this Veterans Day and during the month of November. So, we have a couple of events that we wanted to highlight, and so I'm going to kick it over to Supervisor Bittenger to talk about Wednesday, November 8th. What are you doing?
Yes, so Wednesday, November 8th, tomorrow, get the, the benefit to cook pancakes for our veterans down at Sergeant Bluff at the Veterans Hall, we're going to be down there, so any veterans that are listening on our massive YouTube watching, I don't know, audience, just show up, veterans, and so we'll be able to meet with the veterans, help them, connect them to their benefits. A lot of them do not know the benefits they have, and we have a new packet that we'll be handing out to the veterans to make sure they're fully aware, and so that's what I'll be doing tomorrow. And then just making sure as veterans, I'm a local pastor, many of you know that, so part of my job too is the pleasure of sitting this board is to help veterans just with their mental health, spiritual health, and connection. We know a lot of veterans can be isolated or feel isolated, and so I'll be doing that too as you're sharing a hot pancake, just checking in with them, see how they're doing, and so, and saying thank you for their service, so.
Pastor and pancakes, so appreciate it. So also on Saturday...
That's trademarked, by the way.
What's that?
That's trademarked, we'll trademark that.
Okay, trademark. Saturday, November 11th, of course, is Veterans Day, so 11th hour of the 11th month, Armistice Day, right here at the Woodbury County Courthouse. And just interwoven in the very fabric of this building, as you may know, look at the John Norton mural from 1919 that highlights the service and sacrifice of World War I, and then each post was named after the first soldier to die in that community. So Edward, the Monahan Post, you know, was right here in this building, young private who died. Even the plaque outside, the stairs up here is made from the, the hull of the USS Maine where 230 souls sunk in Havana Harbor in 1898. So, one of the things that I'm really appreciative, Kenny, do you mind sharing your efforts to greenlight the dome and some of the things that you've been doing as well, and then we have a resolution that maybe Supervisor would be kind enough to read, so.
Sure. Jeremy, Supervisor Taylor reached out to me with some information, information from NACO. Many counties in Iowa or around the United States come together and try to do some special things in relationship to Veterans Day and the weeks surrounding that. things in relationship to Veterans Day and the weeks surrounding that. Different counties do different versions of this, but they all try to make some portion of their buildings or activities go green, if you will. This was our first year of trying that and it was a little bit late notice, but we were able to turn our dome up in the atrium a green color and then did some additional lighting at the front entrance and over at the Veteran Affairs Building. So first year of trying that, we got a little more time, we'll do a little better next time around possibly.
Thank you very much for your efforts, Sarah Kenny. And then there's a resolution that we have attached and.
Let's make sure you do a for.
Yeah. So we'll look at this $1,340. So this is from gaming revenue and $840 of it is for Veterans Affairs Commission to be able to highlight the service and what can be offered to not only service members but also their families. And so they're going to be putting some radio spots on the big five, so $840 is for approximately 120 spots. And then they wanted to buy about $500 worth of green lights for those members of the community. So I would move $1,340 from gaming revenue to highlight and support veterans during the month of November.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger to green light the green lights. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. B is the resolution.
And then if I can just mention one more thing, the Woodbury County Veterans Affairs Department services about 200 clients every month as a chaplain and lieutenant colonel and a guard. Those services are not only for soldiers but and airmen, but also their families and legal dependents. They brought in over $2.3 million during this past month, so want to highlight them as well. And there's an attachment with the resolution that I would ask Supervisor Chairman Ung, if you wouldn't mind reading before we move it.
This is a resolution for veterans that reads, whereas the residents of Woodbury County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas Woodbury County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve in our community and the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veterans, service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes special recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as a green light for Veterans County. Woodbury County hereby declares the month of November and especially Veterans Day, November 11th, in 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Woodbury County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 7th through the 30th, 2023. Be resolved this 7th day of November.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so moved.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item nine from the Board of Supervisors, again, this is from Mr. Mark Nelson for action. This is to give direction to the LEC Authority or the Board of Supervisors, I suppose, on placement of meeting recordings.
Thank you, Chairman Ung. We've had some requests to have the LEC Authority public meetings recorded, so folks, either whether they're supervisors or the general public that would like to participate and watch those meetings after the fact could do so. We are not required to do that, but in an effort to increase transparency, that is something that the LEC is interested in doing. However, discussing with Karen, who's been so graciously taking minutes and with Auditor Pat Gill as far as the place that these recordings should end up, Auditor Gill recommended that the Board of Supervisors should give direction to the Authority on where we place that, whether it's on the county's YouTube page with our county board meetings, if it should be on the county website, under the Board of Supervisors, if it should be on the LEC's website. And so I will open that up to discussion. One point of clarification, we do not have the ability to have live recordings like we do for the Board of Supervisors, but we are able to have video and audio recordings. And Karen, if you want to interject here at any point too with where you think some of us should go, that's fine, but I leave it up to you four to help discuss on where you think is the most appropriate.
I would say to keep a consistent format of the website is to put it, I'd put on the LEC's page next to the agenda and the minutes, you could have, just like on our Supervisor's page, it says the video, then you just have the audio there. I would just put it there. That makes the most logical and format sense to keep with the website format, yeah.
Karen, does that work?
I concur.
I would agree.
The format of, are we talking about a video recording?
Correct.
Would this be, do we have other things besides like county town hall meetings on the county YouTube page, if you know? Is this something where the LEC Authority should, you know, provide us with the link or?
Right now, I think we just put the board meetings on the YouTube. But we do put, if they're not a closed session, we'll put those on the county website, on the county's page.
I guess I like having it on the LEC Authority site just to keep it a little cleaner. Otherwise it'll kind of be interspersed and maybe on dates, people who are looking for our stuff. If that makes sense.
Do you mean like a separate YouTube channel?
No, so I think what Supervisor Bittenger is referring to is if you go on the minutes for our meetings, there's a little video link. And I guess that would potentially require, would it require a separate YouTube page then? Do you know Michelle or Karen? Because I think what you're saying is it would need a separate YouTube page if we didn't want it all to be conglomerated.
And I believe that's correct. Michelle, would you know, we need to create a separate YouTube account to record those strictly for the LEC?
I believe we would. The one that we have is under Woodbury County.
Okay. I mean, I think we're speaking this way because it just makes sense to use the equipment in the room since it's already recording and already in a format we're used to, but it should probably be us helping the Authority have, you know, maintain a page they create or they have control over as well. And then we can post it on the Authority's committee page on the Woodbury County website. I know you also have social media pages and different things.
Shane Albrook, 600 Maverick Lane, Madred, Iowa. Question for Supervisor Nelson. Right now, the Authority holds meetings in the first floor boardroom. How do we do video? That's my one question to you to make sure.
And I'll deflect that to Karen. She said it was possible for us to do that or would we, I don't think we have to move downstairs, we could do that upstairs, correct? Sorry, Karen.
To my knowledge, we can record on the equipment that's up there. We just can't do live streaming.
When you say record, do you mean sound not?
It'll be video.
Oh, there's video too? Okay, I just didn't see the camera.
So sometimes when we go out to a rural area, they'll set that up and then it won't be live, but after the fact, then we can upload the video. So I think that'd be appreciated and appreciate your, all your willingness to help out.
Is that agreeable? Ron?
Sure.
So if we cross the bridge, do we need to create a YouTube page for the LEC to host these videos or can we piggyback off of the counties?
I think if it's hard and it's onerous to create a separate one, then we can share. And if it doesn't take too much, then it might be cleaner.
I don't know. I think, I mean, we don't, we have several committees. We don't have any outside committees on our county's page because there is that live function, there's links from our website for our meetings. I think it's not hard to just have a new page created and so all the files are relevant there. So I'd ask Karen and perhaps the Auditor's Office if necessary for help, you know, working that recording equipment with the Authority and providing that file to the new platform that's going to be embedded on.
We can find somebody to help us make a YouTube page, Karen.
The Authority should still, you know, have that page. I mean, the county shouldn't be, you know, able to just edit and do things to the Authority's recording and so. Okay.
So with that, are we officially YouTubers now? Are we officially YouTubers now?
I think we're shedding YouTube viewers. I think we're actually abdicating some of our loyal viewership to another channel right now.
And it costs us revenue.
It's gonna, yeah, yeah.
All that ad money.
Yeah.
I think YouTuber suggests that collabs and stuff like this are actually really, you know, they drive more viewers to you, you know?
Well, we're just starting with YouTube. Pretty soon, Ron, we're going to move into Instagram, we're going to be doing real stories.
Big time stuff.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, China will censor us.
And it all ends in TikTok with Chairman Ung, TikTok videos.
I didn't say TikTok. You said TikTok. All right. Do you want to help us construct the motion, Michelle?
Well, I was just going to ask if we need to have a motion for direction on this or not, if the LEC is just gonna.
I think we should move to record and provide recordings to the LEC Authority for posting on the county website.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Taylor. Anyone have heartburn on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five zero. Item 10 is reports on committee meetings. Raddick.
I didn't have any.
Taylor. Mr. Nelson.
I'm a liaison for secondary roads and Mark Nara has been working very hard on talking to legislators about this legislature, or excuse me, about House File 718 and how it's going to affect our secondary roads and potentially our budget for this next year. And while I appreciate all the work on that, I can't help but think that we had a very successful roundtable last spring and we talked about maybe doing one again in the winter or the late fall prior to the session started, starting. And I think it'd be open for discussion, obviously, but I would like to see if we could perhaps have that same roundtable at some time in December before the holidays. I received immense amount of positive feedback from that roundtable. Obviously, we had a lot of folks that were in attendance that appreciated us doing that. But I think that would be exactly one item that we could definitely talk about. And again, I appreciate all the people that he's been reaching out to and talking to, but I think it'd be great to have all those folks in the same room to discuss not only that issue but any other issues that we find pertinent for the time. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention and we can have more discussion and if there's any interest.
I'd absolutely concur. I thought it was very good and I thought the comments were very specific and pointed. Wasn't just a gripe session, these are the realities of governing at the county level and how your decisions can affect us and, you know, a good give and take. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, let's plan for that. We'll pick a date that works for most of them and hopefully all of us again. All right, moving on to item 11, any citizen concerns? Hearing none. Item 12, any board concerns?
So out of curiosity, we were all individually emailed an article written by a journalist that claims home in Sioux Falls and Okoboji but was interviewed by a couple of local Sioux City residents. And it kind of has a jail timeline that has got a lot of erroneous comments way back from, I think, 2012 that were just incorrect facts and it was clear it was from a couple people that are on the political side that is not the same as the majority of the board here. Is it worth something where we respond to it or not? That's, I guess, a concern. I don't know. Because enough people do read these things and find these things to be true until they read otherwise. So I don't know, I just ask, I guess, what you guys might think we should do because when I read it, I just thought it's really frustrating to see, you know, after all this time, certain lies still being perpetuated, so.
Yeah, I think we can all make, I assume you gentlemen were not contacted for comment? Okay.
No.
So Mark Nelson is quite up to speed with the jail project since he's on the Authority. I'm quite up to speed since I'm the chairman. Others, you guys are up to speed as well. We all, you know, have been involved for several years between all of us. None of us were contacted for comment on what is being referred to by some as an article. It's an editorial. It's like an opinion piece on a blog. And, you know, I kind of snarkly commented in response to someone who brought that article up to me. You know, we already know it says how not to build a jail. We already know how not to build a jail. It's don't do it during a pandemic, don't do it during historic inflation, 40-year high inflation, don't do it during supply chain disruptions, don't do it when, you know, code requirements are accidentally omitted, don't do it, you know, in a state like, don't live in a state like Iowa that requires you to take the minimum bid, the low bid. I mean, those are all things that we know, you know, that's how you don't do it. But if we didn't do what, if we didn't set down on some path, as criticized as it is, the Substack article would instead be titled, "How Not to Plan Ahead." The, what the public doesn't really think about, I don't think, is that, you know, as we talk about, you know, who approves the maintenance funds and all that, if the county had its own, if the county had the current LEC and had a major repair that required any displacement of inmates, it would require a bond referendum. And it would not be considered an emergency because we had every, we had the planning, we had the experts tell us, we had Kenny tell us, these things aren't going to last beyond a certain year, we had experts tell us. We would be faced with a bond issue. And what if that fails? Then we're being forced to house our inmates in other counties rather than what's going to happen now and we are going to be housing them for other jurisdictions. So either way, maintenance issues would be almost out of the control of the Board of Supervisors if you think about it. When you talk about a major repair that requires walls to be taken out and inmates to be moved. So how not to build a jail, just don't do it during a pandemic. But again, the same article would be written by the same people targeting the same political side for not planning ahead. But as for responding, I don't know, we can all write what we want to write, but it's just more, just more work.
I mean, I would quote a verse from Proverbs here, but I'm going to use a greater poet of our time, Taylor Swift. I would just say shake it off and move on. So, no, if we respond to that, Keith, it'll be the endless response.
Well, I just know in the past we've responded and, you know, you see some of the names quoted that it's a usual suspect, you know?
Right. Now, move on. Now, move on. I live by the model, do right for nothing. If you did the right thing, let people squawk and move on.
Well, it's just interesting, because it kind of perpetuates not just existing lies of the past, but it suggests that we started with a one point two million project and ended with a seventy million dollar one. Clearly, at the time, you know, twenty twelve, they're looking at spending one point two million per year. That's what the project was. How can you spend one point two million per year and get the existing jail just to, like, pass code?
So, just to publicly embarrass the embarrassment of an author in that article, one point two million was not what the county was going to receive from federal revenue. That was a partial year at the time, given a project that had not even begun yet. This is our signed, sealed, and delivered intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Marshals and the Sheriff's Office that says, essentially says, we will receive at least three point six, five million dollars per year in federal revenue when the jail is open and ready to go. This is approximately the amount of the bond due each year. This is, how do you, how do you not do a jail? As I told someone that emailed me last night, in any normal universe, getting a jail for free over twenty years would be considered good news and would be getting a little bit of public appreciation right now. But instead, we have Substack writers that ignore this piece of news, and then they go back to, well, let's look at the, let's look at the partial budget hearing for this thing before they even started building jail, so.
Well, and not to mention, we've already gone through one point, one and a half years of being, you know, levying for the bond, and there has been no tax increase because we were able to, one, it's just, you know, the budgeting maneuvers, but also because, you know, with the state and the mental health levy, we have not seen, as Woodbury County taxpayers, an increase in the levy. So, there's just, again, a lie perpetuated that taxes have gone up for this, but that, to this point, to this point right now, has not ever been true. And as revenue will be coming in, it won't be true. So, it's really the way to do it. This is the best practice. We researched that. You know, again, we can't help whether or not there was a pandemic, that we can't help that there was record inflation, and quite frankly, another thing in the construction industry is the sheer amount of baby boomers retiring and the small amount of workforce coming in to replace them. So, a lot of the construction industry has shortages of workers, and, you know, that's all something that contributes, again, to where we're at. But hopefully, this is built and open soon. Again, I don't have control of that timeline. I wish I did, and I could snap my fingers and say, we're open now, but that's not a gift that I somehow have. So, we're going to just plan with what we do have and go from there.
I would invite the gentleman out to lunch with us. We can talk to him privately. The Matthew twenty-eight principle.
Different Matthew.
Yeah, yeah.
Different Matthew, sorry.
That's all right.
First century.
All right, any other board concerns?
I don't have a concern, but I do have a, just want to give a shout out to the Suland Initiative. We went to the luncheon on Friday, and so, shout out to Chris McGowan and Barbara Solonker, just put on a great event. It's great to sit at a table with the men and women that are way smarter than I am. Yeah, Mark, don't laugh too hard about that one. But anyhow, no, I'm just messing. But no, it was just a great event, meeting with our businessmen and women of the community, just hearing their plans, their love for Suland, their, you know, belief in where the board's going, the board supervisors, just the county, just they're thankful for that. But just, it was a good event to see, just the community, how much they care for Suland and the money that's been invested, you know, in the jobs that are being created and stuff like that. But just a shout out to the Suland Initiative for a great, just a great time. So, learned a lot and met some new people to learn from, so it was a good event.
Very good. Any other board concerns?